Monday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Selectmen's meeting, Highway Commissioners, Cemetery Commissioners, First Order Business, call to order for the Pledge of Allegiance. This meeting is being recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
First up on the agenda, we have Citizens' Comments. Anybody wishing to be heard, it's not on the agenda, does not require a vote of the Board. Seeing none.
Chairman's note.
Yes, no, sorry.
Can we do approval minutes?
Going there now. Citizens' Comments was first.
I mean, that's what it says on here.
Mr. Chairman, are you looking at the most updated version of the agenda?
I clicked on the folder and it still didn't pop up.
Try the PDF.
How about I defer it to the vice chairman, he's got the right one.
Okay. Approval minutes twelve to twenty-four.
What's the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of twelve to twenty-four.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Siganovich, seconded by Mr. Landry. I did not attend the meeting, but I watched the video. Any corrections, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor state aye?
Aye.
Unanimous.
All abstained.
One abstention. Hang on, I think I may have found what I needed. Bingo. Next up under Appointments, Anna Durgan, Board of Health, term to expire six sixteen twenty twenty-five. Would you like to come up, say a few words? I see a chairperson here. Would you like to come up and say anything? Good evening. So this is before us because we have a vacancy due to resignation, and I'll turn it over to the chip, Rep. Johnson, and then Dr. Durgan for comments.
Hello.
Good evening.
So the Board of Health would like to recommend Anna for the open seat. We felt that she was the one that had the highest votes next, so we want her to, we want to push her name through to all of you.
Two zero vote.
Excuse me?
Two zero vote by your board, because we have to do like a combined vote with the majority. Dr. Durgan, is that how you think?
Hi, no, just excited about it. I'm definitely looking forward to working with everyone and, you know, just excited to get going. It'll be fun.
Excellent. Anybody from the Boards want any questions for the Chairwoman or Dr. Durgan?
No questions, a statement if I could?
Sure.
I mean, voters voted. You, next in line. Board of Health voted. That's all. It's pretty, in my mind, it's perfunctory, but that's all. I'm only speaking for myself, not for the Board.
Mr. Shaves. Good. Mr. Landry, Mr. Johnson. I like what that also. Dr. Durgan's been a candidate before. She was the second vote catcher. It was a good campaign, a lot of votes, and I echo the chairperson, the Board of Health, we welcome you. Well, as soon as we vote you in, we welcome you.
Thank you.
Chairwoman take a motion to appoint.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Anna Durgan, Board of Health, term to expire June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
There is a motion. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any further comments, questions, or concerns? Hearing none, will call to a vote. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Reappointment. Jeff Murray as our provisional local billing inspector, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-five. I notice Jeff's not here, but he's the backup to the inspector.
I told Jeff that he did not need to appear. This is just a reappointment. He's our backup. He's served in that capacity recently, and he's helped us out in the past, and he's properly licensed.
Excellent. I mean, I'd like to thank Jeff. He's gone on to greener pastures, but he's been around. He's helping us with some compliance stuff that we've been doing, and I appreciate his staying on as our backup building inspector. What's the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson.
Like to make a motion to appoint Jeffrey Murray, provisional local billing inspector, term to expire twelve thirty-one twenty-five.
Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siganovich. Any further questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Murray. Here comes the highlight of the year for the clerk of the Board. License renewals for twenty twenty-five. Start with all premise alcohol license, and on-premise wine and malt, presence package store, off-premise wine and malt, and a club license. You have the floor.
Perfect. So, all right, let's go. License renewals for twenty twenty-five, on-premise, premises, all like alcohol licenses. First for Locke Inc. Last year, I just want to make sure that this is still the same way we want to do this. Last year, we just read into record the main name, not the doing business as. Is that standard? Is that okay? Does that work?
So it's, I feel more comfortable if you read the whole thing. I'm sorry, but, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. Locke Inc., doing businesses Polish Guards, Club Jigger. Just the name is okay, though, right?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. The Polish National Alliance of Dudley, doing business as the PNA. Imperial Park and Shop, doing business as Imperial Park and Shop. Angel Share Wine and Spirits. Amshiv Corp., doing business as Patriot Gas. Tongve Nuen et al., doing business as Quick Stop. One Nineteen Marty's Liquors Inc., Saint Philippateer and Saint Anthony Inc., doing business as Dudley House of Pizza. J and S Blue Inc., doing business as Sydney's Pub. Dudley DNC Inc., doing business as Twenty One West. J Mini Corp., doing business as State Line Farms. Eighty-Eight's Bar and Grill, doing business as Fire Brands Bar and Grill. Rosemary Archangel Michael Inc., doing business as Big Al's Pizza Plus. H W Restaurant Inc., doing business as Yummy's Chinese Restaurant. Sri Desharma Inc., doing business as West Main Street Liquors. Dudley Links Operations LLC, doing business as Dudley Hill Golf Course. Jack Inc., doing business as Upside Food and Drink. Forever Golf. Whiskey Rocks Inc., doing business as Whiskey Rocks. And The Ice Cream Farm Inc. So moved.
So, just to, our Assistant Town Administrator, they're all on here, so all paperwork is in order.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Renewal packets went out in the last week of September, and all of the liquor license applications have been received, and the paperwork is in order.
Mr. Landry, you good? I know you had some questions on some, right?
Right.
This block?
For now.
Okay. Anybody else? Any questions?
In a second. And there's a note about workers' comp. That's all squared away?
Mr. Siganovich, you might be referring to a older version of the agenda that I was working on. Workers' comp has been all squared away, yes.
Perfect.
I just wanted to make sure. I saw the note. I didn't want to ignore it. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you for checking.
Anybody else? Motion and a second? Chief, everything's good with you, right, on all those? Okay. Anybody with questions, concerns, or comments? Hearing none, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you, folks that are staying in business and out of town. Next, number seven, license renewals for twenty twenty-five, common victory license.
Okay, so we have Eighty-Eight's Bar and Grill Inc., doing business as Fire Brands. Rosemary Archangel Michael Inc., doing business as Big Al's Pizza Plus. Dudley DNC Inc., doing business as Twenty One West. J Mini Corp., doing business as State Line Farms. Saint Philippateer and Saint Anthony Inc., doing business as Dudley House of Pizza. J and S Blue Inc., doing business as Sydney's Pub. Quick Stops. Amshiv, doing business as Patriot Gas. Polish National Alliance of Dudley Inc., doing business as the PNA. Dunkin' Donuts. Dudley Donuts, doing business as Dunkin' Donuts. Cumberland Farms. Leonie's Brick Oven Pizzeria. Dudley Links Operations LLC, doing business as Dudley Hill Golf Club. H W Restaurant Inc., doing business as Yummy's Chinese Restaurant. Jimmy's Pizza. Dip and Donuts. Sturbridge Coffee Roasters. Forever Golf. Jack Inc., doing business as Upside Food and Drink. Whiskey Rocks Inc., doing business as Whiskey Rocks. Imperial Park and Shop Inc., doing business as Imperial Park and Shop. Locke Inc., doing business as Polish Guards. Club Jigger. The Ice Cream Farm Inc., and Boston Brunch Bites LLC. And I so move.
Motion made. Mr. Johnson, second. Couldn't get a Z in there. We couldn't get twenty-six, we only got twenty-five. Motion made in a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Number eight, license renewal for twenty twenty-five, orchestra, entertainment, pool table, jukebox, video game.
DNC of Dudley, Twenty One West. Eighty-Eight's Bar and Grill Inc., doing business as Fire Brands Bar and Grill. Locke Inc., doing business as Club Jigger. Polish Alliance of Dudley Inc., doing business as PNA. J and S Blue Inc., doing business as Sydney's Pub. Jack Inc., doing business as Upside Food and Drink. Whiskey Rocks Inc., doing business as Whiskey Rocks. And Boston Brunch Bites LLC. And I so move.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Siganovich. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Nine, license renewal for twenty twenty-five, class one, agent or seller's license of new motor vehicles.
Sean and Michael McGee Inc., doing business as McGee Toyota of Dudley. I move. So I so move.
Motion made.
Sorry.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson. I have a question. The word on the street is they're moving. Did they say anything about their timeline?
From what I understand, they're remaining as advertised as a service center for new and used vehicles, and also certified pre-owned sales.
So they're going to remain at that spot?
Correct.
Okay, good. Hate to lose them. Any other questions? No comments, concerns? Hearing none, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Number ten, license renewal for twenty twenty-five, class two license, secondhand vehicle dealer's license.
Before we get started, I just want to double check. There was originally a note that we were missing paperwork for two of the items on this list. Would you like me to read them in or leave them off if we haven't received the paperwork for them?
I would leave that up through the Chair. I would leave that up to the Board's pleasure on whether or not you choose to renew their licenses after I've received no application materials. It would be item S and item T.
I would recommend, in my opinion, we should not, especially since we haven't received anything. If we have like an incomplete and they were working on it, maybe. But I would say we just didn't want to play by the rules. Unless they're not, unless maybe they're not going to be here anymore, who knows, but thank you.
So, starting with Art Canoyer, doing business as Arts Auto Repair and Sales. Basilius Auto Sales. Robbins Auto Sales. James Iovette, doing business as Precision Auto Rebuilders. Henry and Sophia Zidlick, doing business as Henry's Sales and Service. Michael Mayotte, doing business as West Dudley Auto Sales. Andrew LaCanto, doing business as A Lot of Cars LLC. Robert Romer, J R Services Inc., doing business as Romer Motor Coach. Anthony Simpson, doing business as Simpson and Sons Auto Sale. Legal Auto Sales, Christine Brosnahan. S H Auto Repairs LLC, Sebastian Helwig. Ziggy Automotive Inc., it's a big new Alaska. Eurocars. Mar, Maurice Kalanowski. Zoom Auto Services. Alexander Welski. E L C Inc. [laughing]. E L C Inc., John Guerin. A N S All Automotive Sales and Repair. Danny Habib and Ahmed Rafal. Chrome LLC, M E C. Brian Berthium. And State Line Enterprises LLC, Steven Zaveska.
Second.
What about, what about T?
S and T, we said we were going to leave off for right now.
Oh, I thought it was G. Okay, S and T, okay, I'm sorry.
And I so move, sorry.
Second.
Motion made with multiple seconds. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Hearing none, all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for that, and good luck in twenty twenty-five to all businesses. Number eleven, public business. The B O S vote permission for Highway Superintendent to overspend snow and ice line item or take action relative thereto, Mr. Administrator.
We do this generally every year to be on the safe side. Should we have a particularly bad winter, we have to specifically vote permission for the Highway Superintendent to overspend, and then it's settled up at the end of the year, beginning of the following year. I believe that we're about forty thousand dollars of the ninety-five thousand dollar line item so far, so we want to make sure we vote in the affirmative to make sure that we can continue to move forward for snow removal if necessary.
And, Mr. Administrator, everything comes out of that, right? Material, the overtime for snow removal?
The snow events, correct.
Yes, all comes out of that line item.
That's correct.
Because people will say, oh, we had a mild winter, how do we spend it all? Well, most of it goes to material.
Right.
Because it hasn't increased too substantially in my opinion.
It's been ninety-five, pretty, pretty much since my predecessor, sorry.
I think it was eighty, my first fifteen years, we went to ninety-five. What's the Board's pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
Like to make a motion for, to give permission for the Highway Superintendent to overspend if necessary, the snow and ice line item, or take any action relative thereto. Does that have to be part of the motion?
Yep. Motion made.
Second.
Second by Mr. Siganovich. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? MJ was excused tonight. All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Board of Selectmen vote to revise second late fee for dog license from twenty-five to fifty, as voted at the special town meeting on October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. What is the Board's pleasure? Mr. Johnson?
Second.
Second, Mr. Siganovich. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. C, Board of Selectmen vote to revise late fee for kennel license to five hundred for first offense, one thousand for second offense, as voted at the special town meeting, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. What is the Board's, Mr. Siganovich?
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson. Any further questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Town Administrator report, Mr. Rudolph.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In everyone, in the OneDrive, I've placed a draft policy for the delayed opening of town offices, and it's been uploaded. I'm hoping to have a vote from the Board next week to approve or make any changes, and we can have a conversation over the next two weeks with any input you may have in terms of wanting me to change things or better specify things in that draft policy. And this is just a policy, so it's consistent for both the library and the town hall in terms of how we handle snow events in terms of opening the municipal offices. Do we delay? Do we work remotely? Do we close for the day? What triggers different actions? And also how we make those notifications. So that's in the OneDrive for the Board. They'll take a look at and give me any feedback that you may have over the course of the next two weeks. We just appointed tonight a interim appointment for the Board of Health till the next, till the next election. One of the things I think we've struggled with particularly over the last year or so is the fact that there's only three members on that Board. It makes it very difficult. If you lose them, if you, if you have a resignation, or you can't, you know, you have one or two members that possibly can't show up that night. It makes it very difficult for the Board of Health to go forward with their mission. So the Board of Health is moving forward with an article on the February tenth special town meeting warrant to increase the number of elected members from three to five. This article, as I mentioned, will be included in the February special town meeting draft warrant for review, and the procedure requires that a vote to increase the number of members of an elected Board take place at a town meeting, special or annual, held at least sixty days before the annual town election. To ensure, and to ensure compliance with election laws, this vote should occur at least sixty-four days before the election, and the town clerk must receive notice of the vote within this timeframe. So if we left it till May, it wouldn't be sufficient time to vote in June. So really, if we want to do this, you know, this, this year, we need to kind of do it in February. It just so happens that we have a special town meeting called February tenth. There's a joint meeting scheduled, the Board of Selectmen, the FAA. The Board of Selectmen and FAA will hold a joint meeting to consider two articles. We're going to revisit Article Eight that failed in October. This first article revisits Article Eight, which failed at the October special town meeting. The article seeks to borrow funds to address regulatory and compliance issues for Eagle Drive private wells and ongoing testing and monitoring. I requested the adjusted final cost estimates from Weston and Sampson. These updated figures will take into, into account development since October, meaning what we've spent since October, since it failed, and it's going to make adjustments accordingly. It's going to take into account requirements through the end of the current fiscal year, and it'll also take into account any needs that we may have extending through calendar year FY, instead of just being till FY twenty-five, which we're, you know, closing in on half the year already. It'll take into account, into account the entire calendar year of twenty twenty-five, so we'll have an idea as to what those adjusted costs will be. So we've been talking about a three hundred thousand dollar potential request. I think, I think the exact figure was three twenty-four. If you took out the six hundred thousand dollar grant that passed, and we remove that from the nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollar article, that left us with three twenty-four, but we'll have a good number when we start these, when we have these, this joint meeting. So it may be a little bit less, maybe a little bit more, but we'll see where we're at when the time comes. And we'll have that all broken down on the spreadsheet for everybody to take a look at. And a few important upcoming dates. I mentioned that joint Board of Selectmen FAA meeting that's scheduled for January thirteenth at six thirty PM. We'll open the warrant for citizen petitions January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, and we're going to close it on January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. And then the Board of Selectmen will have to have a meeting for the specific reason to sign the warrant, because we're going to be up against the posting deadline. So we're scheduling that for the twenty-first of January, which is actually a Tuesday, limited to just having us, having the Board come in, vote to approve the warrant, sign it, and we'll get it posted the following day. And that will get us within the deadline timeframe to post it, to call that February tenth special town meeting. So it'll be a quick meeting, but we need at least three members to come and sign for approval. And that's really all I have, Mr. Chairman, for tonight.
Any questions for Town Administrator? Motion to accept?
So moved.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Siganovich? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Assistant T A H R?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Town accountant? Police chief?
Just real quick, tomorrow's the last day for the toy drive. If anybody still wants to donate any unwrapped new toys, we'll accept them tomorrow, and we're planning on passing them out Wednesday night. But I don't want to take any credit for it. It was the W Police Union that set everything up, spearheaded by Sajer Ramalard. So if anybody wants to donate, there's still time to donate tomorrow. And this is the last to donate, there's still time to donate tomorrow. And this is the last meeting before Christmas, so I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. And last but not least, I'm sure it's on everybody's mind, the drones. We're looking for guidance from the state on how to respond to them. We've gotten some calls in the last couple of days. We got into drones. I've seen them in my backyard, in the sky. It's not us. It's not us flying them. But as soon as we get some guidance, we will definitely post something on Facebook, let the residents know what the state wants to do.
Yeah, there was some complaints of February, I think, two, Saturday or Sunday, there was some.
I'm as, I'm, I'm very intrigued as everybody else is to see what's going on with this because I think the whole nation is...
Crazy. Thanks, chief. Town treasurer, collector?
Good evening. The tax bills are in the mail, so Friday was our cutoff. Happens every year. Somebody makes a payment today. Really only Santa Claus is going to be the one to be able to pull a bill, a bill back. They are loaded up, so anybody who got the Unipay message, this is the bill that is due for the first quarter for twenty twenty-five. It's a two-three date, so when you have the due date of two, one is set by statute, we go by that Monday, without interest, of course. All the bills that are up there are dated as such. The bill presentment, if it's not up there today, will be up there. The historical date of what you paid for your taxes is requested through the office. Water bills were due last week. We'll still be able to take those without the twenty-dollar demand, but there'd be some interest. Other than that, we'll keep it short. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. Board member comments? I'm sorry, no, that was the part, yeah. Board member comments. Mr. Johnson?
As Chief said, hopefully everyone has a great holiday, some Merry Christmas. Be good.
Mr. Siganovich?
I have nothing.
Mr. Landry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just remind everybody, be patient, kind, think of your neighbors, be careful on the roads, and thank you.
Mr. Shays?
I just want to echo what Mr. Johnson said, and also wish anybody who is celebrating Hanukkah this year, a good Hanukkah. That's coming up, same day as Christmas. It's hot, never happens. So, it's a busy holiday time, especially if you're celebrating everything, which I hope people do. There's, you know, it's, it's been a tough year, I think, for a lot of people, so hopefully, spirit of the season will carry you out, and we can start twenty twenty-five fresh.
Excellent. I echo that also. Merry Christmas, and we do meet the week before New Year's, right?
Yeah.
We do. And I apologize to the treasurer, collector, Rich. I should have had you step there while you, I said, we had a question, and I know MJ's not here. I had people reach out to me Saturday that were turned away because of the square. So, I know you and I are going to, we were supposed to try to meet before about this. We haven't had a chance, so I'd like to try to figure something out maybe next couple of weeks. You know, try to get MJ involved, or Amanda, or, just, just to see.
Certainly, because I extended that, that invitation.
Yes.
Look forward to sitting down. I have, I have a separate solution as well for it. Think there's a few things that need to be sorted out when you and I sit down. Absolutely, and I appreciate.
Yeah, and I did come in, I want to say, I didn't come in one time. I did, on a Monday. I think you were, you were out or you weren't in. I apologize. We haven't connected again. It's been...
Make it a point, absolutely. Not necessarily a New Year's resolution, but...
I hate those. First one says, lose weight and stop drinking. I can't do that. I'm just kidding. And then one more quick one. When I was looking at the meeting last week, and I know Mr. Ruda can expand on it, we're waiting for information for Weston and Sampson for grant, from invoices?
Absolutely. So, part of a bigger conversation, we're looking to do some research for a few vendors in hopes of reimbursement. As part of a separate grant, I'd let the town administrator go into the details. Really, matter of sorting through and finding what's, what's necessary and what's qualified. So, preliminary stages right now, but it's in the works, amongst other things. Getting the bills out was the, was the primary thing for, for today.
So, that's time-sensitive, though?
Well, there is some concern that there may be some changes in federal grant money that's available after January twentieth for reimbursement. So, the guidance I received from DEP is to try to get it in, get the request in as close to that date as possible, so that it's, it's earmarked in advance how many changes that might happen.
All right. So, there was a little bit of a crunch?
There's definitely a crunch, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Didn't mean to make you get up again. I should have kept you up there, sorry.
We'll get, I get up a couple of more times. It's not a problem. Always happy to participate. Thank you.
Hopefully, that's, hopefully that's it. We're going to be adjourning into executive session, and the motion will read not to resume an open session unless necessary. Who would like to take us in to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating portion, position of the public party, and the chair so declares, SEIU eight-eight-eight, and to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto cybersecurity. What's the board's pleasure?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Landry.
Second.
Second, Mr. Johnson. Roll call.
Mark Landry, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
Stephen Sullivan, aye.
Janet Deschaine, aye.
Carrie Siganovich, aye.
Good night, everyone, and a Merry Christmas.